Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, June 24, 2025. I am Chair of the Board, Rick Vass. To my left is Vice Chair, Commissioner Krista Yolcom, and to her left is Commissioner Matt Shuldine. To my right is Commissioner Sean Flowerde. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you'd begin the meeting.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to Item 1, Minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 17, 2025.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, please call the roll.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Shuldine?
Yep.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 2, Claims. 2A, Approval of the Claims Processed Through June 20, 2025.
I move approval.
Second. Motion, second, to approve Item 2A. Please call the roll.
Shuldine?
Yep.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2B, Approval of Claims Including Billings for Goods and Services Beyond the 90-Day Time Period Provided Nebraska Vice Statute 23-135 for Jones Automotive, dated June 13, 2025, for a total of $10,889.25. A Street Auto Parts, dated June 17, 2025, for a total of $14,399.87. Electronic Contracting Company, dated June 18, 2025, for a total of $343.50.
I move approval of these claims.
Second. Motion, second, to approve Item 2B. Please call the roll.
Shuldine?
Yep.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, that brings us to Item 3, Special Presentations. We have a series of them. The first is 3A, Recognition of Paula Luthers for her years of service.
If you would please come forward. My friend, it's so good to see you this morning. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. We just wanted to take a moment to express our appreciation for all the work you've done for Lancaster County over all these years. How many years has it been, Paula?
Twenty.
Twenty. I know there was a new employee that came on about seven years ago who didn't really understand the county benefits program, and he was very fortunate to be able to have somebody he could call who could help him get organized and understand it. And any time I had a problem, Paula, you were always there to give me good information. Your faithful service has really helped employees of Lancaster County enjoy their benefits very much. So, on behalf of all of us, I want to express our appreciation for the work you've done for all our employees.
Yeah.
You'd like to say, you'd like to get out of here, so enjoy your retirement. Thank you. I'd recommend pickleball with us.
Okay.
Commissioners, that brings us to 3B, the Commissioners Award of Excellence for April 2025 for Daniel Kadenbach, County Engineer in the category of Customer Relations. And I'll read the nomination into the record.
Yeah, come on up, Daniel.
Daniel Kadenbach, Engineering Technician, Bridge Inspector with the County Engineers' Office, has been selected as the Commissioners Award of Excellence winner for April 2025. Kadenbach has worked for Lancaster County for 15 years. He was nominated by Doug Sendler in the category of Customer Relations. In his nomination, Sendler states, "Daniel consistently demonstrates a high-level professionalism, technical expertise, and dedication to public service." In his role, Daniel is responsible for a wide range of duties that are critical to the success of Lancaster County's infrastructure projects. He ensures proper traffic control is in place for work zones, uses various types of survey equipment to verify project alignments and elevations, and is certified to test construction materials for quality and compliance. His ability to accurately read and interpret project plans and specifications, coupled with strong working relationships with contractors, helps ensure projects are built to a standard and completed efficiently. Daniel also performs annual inspections of the county's existing bridges and culverts, documenting his findings in accordance with the state and federal requirements. He has served as the lead inspector on several federal aid construction projects, positions that demand extra documentation, rigorous material verification, and use of specialized Nebraska Department of Transportation computer programs. Daniel has taken initiative to become proficient in these programs, a skill that is vital for maintaining compliance on federally funded projects. As a forward thinker, Daniel excels at anticipating the needs and planning during bridge and box culvert construction. His proactive approach has enabled contractors to better schedule their work, resulting in cost savings for the county and earlier project completion, reducing disruptions for the traveling public. Additionally, Daniel has helped Lancaster County save money by designing efficient culvert replacement projects, drawing on his extensive field experience and streamlining construction processes. Daniel exemplifies the values of excellence, innovation, and stewardship in public service. His contributions have made a measurable positive impact on Lancaster County's infrastructure, making him a deserving candidate for recognition. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Daniel Kadenbach with the Commissioners Award of Excellence for the month of April 2025.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I'm always happy when someone from Doug Sendler's group, which is our construction management group, wins this award. And then, at the same time, I'm sad, because this group is so dedicated to ensuring that our construction is done correctly and making sure that the investment the taxpayers are making in infrastructure lasts into the next generation, that when their peers win this, they come down here alone, because they don't want to leave their project site. And so, Daniel's peers are all out on the project site today. What I'd like to say about Daniel is that I appreciate that he is dedicated to Lancaster County engineering. Our bridge inspection program is better because he's here, and I know that I can depend on Daniel to make the right decisions in the field and to communicate correctly when we need to do additional things. And so, I want to thank Daniel for his work.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'd like to give this, I had a chance to meet you and hear about some of your projects real briefly. As we know, infrastructure is such a major role that local government plays, so thanks for playing your part. I also learned he's in the Air National Guard as well, so we appreciate your service there, too. So, congratulations. Thank you.
I have a question, Daniel. Air National Guard?
Air National Guard.
Do you know a Sergeant Vass? Because I know it's a big...
Sounds familiar, but not particular.
I understand. It's like when people used to ask me if I knew somebody who worked at the railroad.
Right.
There were like a thousand people. Well, anyway, thank you for all the work you've done in behalf of the citizens of Lancaster County. And I know we have another gentleman who's come up. Would you like to speak, sir?
Yeah, Doug Sendler, Lancaster County. I'm the guy who nominated Daniel. Just want to emphasize the fact in the statement about federal aid projects. I thought he did an excellent job of learning the Department of Transportation system, or computer system, similar to ours in some ways, but a lot different. And then, the biggest thing about it was, is when we started our federal aid jobs, they changed up and changed all of the program setup. So, Daniel had to take the time to learn all that and just really dig into it and did a really good job and got us in compliance with federal aid projects. So, did a really good job of that. Lancaster County is lucky to have him.
Thank you for nominating.
All right. See you back.
Commissioners, that brings us to 3C, the 2024 Department of Corrections Employee of the Year Award to Ryan Lowe. And I have Ryan's nomination to read into the record. Based on a nomination from Officer Katon Thornton, Officer Ryan Lowe has been named the 2024 Lancaster County Department of Corrections Employee of the Year. Officer Thornton writes that Officer Lowe is a phenomenal training coach and amazing coworker. He manages time well and is able to juggle and meet the needs of multiple officers that are moving through different stages of the FTO program. The connections that he makes with them while they are under his wing allows them to soar even after they move on to another shift. Ryan has developed a wealth of knowledge over his time with both our departments and the State Department of Corrections. He is always ready and willing to share with his peers. Ryan brings an infectious positive attitude and the completion of his duties and carries the performance beyond his assignment as a training coach. He is always ready to step up and assist his peers with whatever task they may need completed, whether it be completing rounds, serving meals in a housing unit, or assisting in the booking area during busy times. No one has to ask Officer Lowe for help. He listens to his radio, and when he hears that his coworkers are being pulled in different directions, he steps in and replies, "954, can grab that." Beyond his daily contributions, Officer Lowe participates in the department's policy and procedure group, making suggestions to improve and streamline daily operations. He also directs a direct supervision and cell extraction instructor for the department during both the new hire orientation and the department's training academy. By making all these contributions, Officer Ryan Lowe is helping to shape the future of the department. Ryan truly is the best, both as a training officer and coworker. He sets an excellent example for his peers and is more deserving of the Employee of the Year Award.
All right, perfect. So, I'm Brad Johnson, Director, Lancaster County Department of Corrections. You know, it makes me proud to work with such great folks. And I couldn't say it any better than what Officer Thornton did. What he does is so vital for our mission. He trains new individuals, makes sure they understand their tasks, and that can be very mechanical, but he also ensures they understand the philosophy, the compassion, and teamwork, and the overall mission. So, I really appreciate the chance to bring him forward. So, congratulations.
On behalf of the Commissioners, I do want to present this to you, and thank you for your work. I mean, the letter, the nominating letter, the words that Director Johnson shared with us, but also the work that you do sets the tone for the entire department and contributes so much to the success and the safety of the department, of your peers, your coworkers, but also the people that are housed there. And for that, we are very, very appreciative. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. This was a bit of a surprise nomination by Officer Thornton, so I want to thank her for being here as well. And next, I would like to thank my family, especially my wife for being here and always standing beside me. Your love, support, and patience have carried me through more than she probably knows. Everything I do, I do with your strength behind me, and I truly wouldn't be here today without you. I also want to take a moment to recognize all the staff back at the jail. These men and women are truly the backbone of the operation that we have at the jail. Every day, they step into a demanding environment with professionalism, grit, and unshakable sense of duty. Many of our officers put in long hours, not because they want to always, but because the job requires it. That means time away from their families, from birthday parties, from the everyday moments that matter most to them, and yet, they keep showing up. They keep giving it their all, and that's exactly what they're doing back at the jail. This award may have my name on it, but it represents their commitment just as much as mine. To my fellow officers, this is for you. Your sacrifice, dedication, and resilience are what make the difference every single day. You deserve this recognition more than anyone. Thank you all. I'm honored and grateful. God bless.
You're kind of getting away, but that's all right. We can yell.
This is our chance to embarrass you. Well, I just want to say that Officer Lowe actually was a field training officer of mine, I don't know, maybe 14 years ago, taught me how to work in Central, I think, over at DEC. No? Okay, all right. Well, I remember you from the time when you worked at the state when I was there as well, and you're exactly the kind of leader, you're exactly the kind of team member that keeps the facility running. And I want to thank you for your service and for just your willingness to help serve our community.
Just a quick note, I know you all want to get on with your day, but you know, it's an honor for us to serve the citizens of Lancaster County, but we don't repair any culverts, we don't protect anyone incarcerated, we don't provide information about important benefits. We really rely on high-quality folks to represent us out there, and it was really an honor to have the three of you here this morning. And so, just on behalf of us, thank you for representing our county so well, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you to your family for sharing and supporting you.
Thank you.
Very good. Now, I think you're...
I'm good.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to Item 4, the Consent Items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, Amendments to the following county contracts, C-23-0593 with Trade B Environmental Services LLC for the annual city of Lincoln and Lancaster County Hazardous Waste Services. C-21-0041 with Catalyst Courts and Land Records to renew a license for community corrections to utilize case management software. And B, a right-of-way contract with the following, Charles Bolar Ingersoll, West Davie Road, Northwest 40th Street, in the total amount of $1,757.
I move approval of the consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Johnson? Oh, excuse me. Flowerde?
Yes.
Shuldine?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to Item 5, New Business, 5A, Request Under Personnel Rule 17.14D for a one-time cash award of $500 to Ryan Lowe.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve. Please call the roll.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Shuldine?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5B, Resolution in the Matter of Transferring Appropriations from the General Fund Miscellaneous Budget to the County Assessor Register of Deeds Budget. The amount to be transferred is $20,000.
All right. Good morning. Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Officer. Last resolution for fiscal year '25. This is to kind of make sure that all of our budgets are set up. This one here is for $20,000 to the Assessor Register of Deeds. They had kind of a larger retirement that took place during the fiscal year. They were hopeful that they would be able to maybe kind of eat that in their budget. They got fairly close, but this $20,000 is just to kind of finish that piece up, and then, from there, you know, we've got, what, four or five days left, and fiscal year will be closed out. So, this is just the final piece of that.
You say that with a lot of confidence, I assume, Dennis, that we've hit the last transfer?
Yeah, this is it, because we don't really have any opportunities left. So, if anybody needs to reach out to me, it's too late.
Let's cut that off now. It is June 24. Very good. The Commissioners?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve this transfer. Please call the roll.
Shuldine?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5C, Resolution with the Nebraska Department of Transportation toward a federal aid project, HSIP 33658, to pavers companies, Waverly, Nebraska, at the 148th and Holdren's location. Total cost of the project is currently estimated to be $698,981.24. The county share is estimated to be $139,796.24.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This resolution is to approve awarding this contract to pavers to do this work on 148th Street for intersection improvements. We're really excited about that. This is our first highway safety improvement money to go to 148th Street. We know that we're currently studying, we anticipate studying this corridor again with our Safe Roads for All grant. We know from 2018 that this corridor needs about $40 million in improvements to make it into the future. It is currently the most dangerous road in Lancaster County and has been for quite some time. And so, I look forward to getting this project constructed to just help ease a little bit of the pressure on 148th Street.
Do we have a date on construction yet, Pam?
You know, once NDOT finishes getting the contract in place with the contractor, I don't see any reason why it still couldn't be this year. And so, we're getting this one in early enough that we have a good chance of getting it complete this year.
It's a big, it's a small, it's a big step, it's a small step, a small part, but it's a big step, too.
Cleaning up the south side of 148th Street with some paving, and then now this on the north side. I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve. Please call the roll.
Shuldine?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5D, An Agreement with Felsberg Holmvig to Perform Environmental Tasks Concluded in the Attached Exhibit A at the Request of the County Engineer. Costs of the county shall not exceed $35,000.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This contract is to take care of issues that are centered around environmental issues, in particular, the more specialized endangered species, the birds and the bats, and the bugs, and of course, the endangered salt wart and the orchid that we have in Lancaster County. We have a significant amount of experience with Felsberg Holmvig, and they are very good at completing these tasks expeditiously while protecting the environment.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Shuldine?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5E, Memorandum of Understanding with the Nebraska Association of County Officials for Purposes of Allowing Lancaster County to Use NACO's Bulkmail Permit to Mail Postcards Is Required under Nebraska Vice Statute 77-1633.
Move approval.
Motion, second, to approve. Please call the roll.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Shuldine?
Yep.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5F, Acceptance of a Grant Award in Special Conditions in the Nebraska Crime Commission's Juvenile Services Commission Grant Program, the amount of $92,000.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for Lancaster County. This particular grant is a state competitive grant that was awarded to our county. It is to fund programming at the Asian Center.
Asian Center? You said...
Asian Community and Cultural Center. Yes.
At first I heard Aging Center, and I thought, no, they don't get together so...
Yes, no.
Asian Center.
Asian Center. Second.
Motion, second. Sarah, we probably don't say it enough, but thank you for all you do for the youth of Lancaster County. I mean, this is one more step, so thank you. Krista and I were bragging about you yesterday.
We were. Oh, boy. Thank you. Well, thank you for your support. I couldn't do without you.
You're welcome. Please call the roll.
Shuldine?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5G, Acceptance of a State Crisis Intervention Program Grant Award from the Nebraska Crime Commission in the Amount of $166,805 to Support the Square One Project.
Yes, and this particular grant was also a state pass-through grant. It's federal funding. The federal representatives were here for a site visit with the crime commission and learned about Square One and wanted to be part of the project, and so, they asked us then to apply for this funding that they passed through the crime commission. So, we are honored to have another partner roll out Square One with us.
That's excellent, and I move approval.
Second.
Very impressive. Please call the roll.
Shuldine?
Yep.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5H, Grant Contract with United Way of Lincoln for the Clarity Food Distribution Program in the Amount of $8,000.
And then, this final one is a contract with United Way. It's actually to work with the Center for Children, Family, and the Law for the Clarity Program. Nonprofit agencies that distribute food have access to Clarity then, so they can enter data as to when people come in to receive food, and that just helps us see what the need is in our community, so it benefits us.
Move approval.
Motion, second, to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Shuldine?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Vass?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
5I, Settlement Agreement and General Release with Lancaster County and Jacob L. McClellan effective June 16, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve. Please call the roll.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde? Flowerde?
Yes.
Shuldine?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Up next is Item 6, Public Comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items related to county business not in the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move forward.
Item 7, Announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including budget hearings, on Thursday, June 26th, 2025, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold the following meetings and public hearings on Tuesday, July 1st, 2025, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting, a public hearing regarding Text Amendment 25007, Amending County Subdivision Regulations, Chapter 3, Sections 3.12, and Amending County Zoning Regulations, Article 2 and 15, and the Board of Equalization Meeting. The County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on ALO Channel 2, Inspection Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Last item is adjournment.
Move for adjourn.
Motion, second, to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Shuldine?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?